Okay, thank you. Welcome everyone to the special meeting of April twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, one P M. Uh open this meeting uh five and we have a call please.
Uh President Nakatane, trustee you.
Yeah.
I'm trustee cats, I am here. Trustees or to touch is uh on her way and trustee ability is unable to attend today.
And so we have considered a program agenda. Can I get someone to motion?
Motion second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay, hold on real quick because we have one issue. Do we have any public comments today?
We have none online. Public comment?
No, just okay.
Okay, no public comment. Personnel is C one. We have ratification of appointment interim chief business officials. Could I get a motion? So. Motion, motion second, call in favor.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so passed. And now we'll move to our study session.
We may even take public comment on that issue.
What's that?
You can take public comment on that.
Uh, we just asked for it. Just ask for.
On the agenda.
Sorry?
Yes, for items not on.
Oh.
No, we can only take public comments on items on the agenda.
On the agenda, so it's a special meeting. So do you have a public comment on?
I just didn't understand what the, what the item was.
Oh, so sorry, the first C one is a ratification of appointment of interim chief business official.
I heard what you said.
Okay. And he's been taking up the comments on.
That's a study session. And we're gonna go straight into our architecture.
Did you have public comment on the study session?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Julio Royal, Director of Maintenance Operations in Saigon. We're here today to have a work workshop around really looking at architecture, the processes, and today we're gonna go over the stakeholder engagement, that's gonna be the process of the middle school as well as for the elementary schools um in general. Um the architectural services and really architectural as a whole, as we look at for the design and planning of middle school in our messaging projects, and the schedule logistics, conceptual phase deliverables. Um we're gonna review the steering committee meeting that we had earlier this week and which was having a middle school staff and other stakeholders, as well as our schematic design kickoff, which includes a site analysis, concept and inspiration. Steering committee meeting review and then support feedback and thoughts and all of that and so. Tonight, today with me is Laura Nos with the NACIS. Laura is our architect, Laura's team is our architect for the middle school project and then Sandrine will they come, their program and give the documents and the beat. It comes and also like a construction. So I'm gonna hand it off here to Laura to kind of get started on our next page please.
Um Julio went over most of the agenda, so if we could go to the next slide. Uh one of the things we were asked to do was talk a little bit about the phases of our architectural design process. Um so we had just finished that conceptual design phase. The intention there was to validate the program, so spaces and square footage. And as you all know and and went through, deciding where we were gonna put the school. So now we can dig into schematic design where we start to get the big ideas around um the design and its implementation. We start to investigate the correct building systems, the plan of coming, all of those kind of things. Uh we engage the stakeholders, of course, and we'll end this phase with a cost estimate and a deliverable that the board will be presented and uh priority prioritization will happen depending on whether that budget comes in. Design development, you so we're making the really big decisions early and we keep adding detail, right? Um so design development, the technical aspects start to get layered in. Uh we have agency outreach, a lot more coordination and presence of the engineers. And again, that phase will end with a cost estimate and reconciliation. The construction documents is that big fat set of drawings that you're used to seeing around architectural services. Um and that will have detailed drawing specifications, preparing those for the division of the state architect. Um we will have already met with the state architect a couple of times before we get to submitting it. And that is to talk with them about our approach and any key issues of code or interpretation. And again, cost, you'll see cost estimates then. And then that agency review, um we are looking at this project as four separate submittals to the state architect in order to meet our scheduling goals. So that's one of the topics for them. So while we have this very linear linear process, you'll see when Sandrine talks about it, there's a lot of overlapping phases. Um we support the bidding process that Flint will go through with the subcontractors, uh answering their questions along the way and making clarifications. And then at the end of that, they will come with a guaranteed maximum price for this project. And then during construction, we oversee construction. The district has an inspector of record um on site virtually full time. That is the eyes and ears of the architect, but also the division of the state architect. And then the field engineers will come from the state architect's office on a regular basis to review not only the inspectors findings, but to see if there's any deviations from their, the approved plans. So there are a lot of layers of people involved, including testing agencies and others that will test concrete strength and and everything across the board, as well as those like local agency engagement. And then um the owner architect contractor have regular, usually biweekly, often weekly, if you include Zoom meetings that uh the team is answering and directing any uh uh questions that come up along the way. I always say at this part, construction is hard. And so um there is always a lot of questions and a lot of um discussion and clarification that has to happen along the way. Next please. So one of the things we often talk about when we talk about architectural services is the change curve. Um I mentioned making those big decisions earlier and layering detail. So our opportunity to change and influence without cost impacts comes early in the process, right? When we're making those big decisions. It's why we have those milestones at the end of each phase to pause, look at the cost estimate and look at everything um related to it before we move into the next phase. Because costs changes you all wanna make during construction, that's where the big bucks are spent, right? Because we've already put something in, we have to take it out, we have to go back to the state architect and the inspectors in order to make those changes. So uh more engagement early, uh less engagement by stakeholders at the end. So um the steering committee for just this phase, the schematic design phase is um a three step process. And a lot of that is intended just to get us to the end of the school here. So as much information as we can draw from that committee before they all go away for the summer. The meeting we have this week was a review of conceptual design and some inspiration and images. Those are the images we'll be talking about with you all today. Uh we made it clear with the steering committee that we would bring forward their comments, but that the board would ultimately make the decisions on that. Then uh early May, we have a meeting called the departmental level meeting. We'll meet sort of every hour on the hour with all of these groups to kind of do some design from the inside out. What is it you need in your space? What does that look like? Uh here's some three D modeling. How do we want to move things around? And then the third meeting will be the draft schematic design deliverable with the um site plan, floor plans, building, massing and all of that. So uh we can hopefully bring to you the endorsement of the steering committee when we bring you that with the cost estimates. Um the next piece was a reminder, and you've seen a version of this from Sandrine in the past, just how many people and agencies are involved in this process. The team on the left is just our consultant team uh that's under the architect. So you can see um that conductor position that we sit in there. The project consultants are the ones Sandrine's are 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 leading. And that's everything from our sequel consultants to surveying and hazardous materials. And then, of course, we've talked a lot about the agencies involved. It's not just the state architect. It's everything from PG and E and our local utilities to the city and county and beyond.
Alright, so we we went over that last night, but I'll go over it briefly. Um so like Laura was saying, um we're looking at uh difference uh design phases as well as agency approval and construction. Um one thing about the middle school project, reviewing the schedule and how we can get things moving along uh without interruption. Uh essentially, the interim housing has to happen before we even start the demolition and construction of the rest of the project. So we have to separate the interim housing. It's its own uh permits set and construction set. So that's gonna be phase one. And then we looked at phase two. Uh and and the state allows us to break it down into increments and that will allow us to start working on the demolition remediation as we continue developing the the design for the the new middle school. So uh we're gonna break down the uh phase two into three increments uh that will allow us to uh keep going with construction um faster and meet the schedule. Um again, at the bottom, just listing a few agencies, that's the the main agencies we're gonna have to go through. Sequel, CGS, DTSC, CDE are the main agencies. And the next slide, essentially focused on sequel.
I'm just wondering what, you know, do we wanna listen to the entire presentation then ask questions or should we break?
Yeah, I've seen.
I don't know what the ideal.
Whatever.
Yeah, it's a workshop.
Okay, I was, I didn't wanna just told you about. Um, well then, let's go back a slide. Natalie, go ahead. I don't know.
I, yes, I was hoping you could maybe expand on with phase two, what the different, like with the modernization, so increment three. In phase two, modernization, say like what the difference is, like differences with that and what that entails.
Oh, okay, so um phase two, essentially the, when we start demolition of the existing, the main building and did the entire product, including removing the interim housing. Increment one is essentially gonna be the demolition of this building as well as any mitigation we need to do. Um and some associated sites improvements or preparations. Phase two increment two is essentially the the new uh middle school, the design of the new middle school. Phase uh increments three is um the modernization of the existing multipurpose.
Thank you.
As well as the balance of the remainder of the sites and removal of the interim housing is the tail end.
I I forgot the modernization aspect of those remaining.
Correct. So we have to phase them so that we can't, and one reason we have it at the tail end is that during the interim housing, the multipurpose will still be used. So uh.
And probably pretty aggressively, right? Because it's everything's so tight, you know.
Okay.
We have a timeline on how long the gym will be out of commission during that modernization.
We're focused on on summer or potentially two summers um was the goal, so that it wouldn't be out of commission much. I mean, uh it pieces are condition assessment and what the seismic retrofit is gonna look like for that building. Um but I think that is the dream if we have to get.
The next phase of the refinement of the schedule. The more information, the more we'll be able to refine that schedule. But right now the.
And demolition of this building, it looks like ideally it would happen over the summer. So all that dust and noise and everything is done while there's no students on campus.
Actually, the intent would be that obviously we would build the interim housing during the summer or finish by end of summer.
Right.
And then so when school starts again, you, uh was it twenty five, twenty six?
Yep.
Um then everybody would move to the interim housing, but the demolition would start probably in the fall.
Okay.
And otherwise, you're gonna have to keep all the furniture in.
Oh, we have to put in storage.
Right.
Right, you would have to put everything in storage um to try and do that simultaneously.
And one piece uh that I'm not showing here, um the district office, because we will be demolishing the entire building.
Yeah.
We're currently um looking out of options for the district's office. And essentially the schedules for relocating the.
Options.
The key words.
Yeah.
Um.
Much better.
It would be.
I what we want Taco Bell.
They need to split our friends with.
Only.
Brand commercial space, I said for sure.
Can I just tell you where?
Can I ask you? So I just wanna know, so if you were looking at demolition, which everybody thinks is really loud, right? And dust and disruptive and methane gases. Um so I I just wanna know when it would.
I tried, I tried to argue you those concerns last night, yeah.
People are concerned for, you know, I mean, it's their children, your child, your child, Ellie's child and mine. And you know, parents are concerned understandably with the dust and and everything else. So when will the demolition take place? Like, is it going to be while the classes are going on or?
Some of it, potentially, unless we're going to pay for all nights and weekends. Um I think though that well, some of our conversation later and kick me under the table if you want, um is gonna be about where we're going with um the waste on this campus and what, whether we're bringing in bulldozers and not be the building over, or whether we're demounting that building to, for salvage and other things, because they have a different cost, they have a different impact and they have a different um uh duration, right? Uh how long it it takes to um do those kind of things. Now, certainly Flint is very good, and I have them on lots of projects, very good at working around schedules. But there will be noise and then the dust control is another part, working with the um air quality district. You have to put your demolition plan in front of them to keep the um uh the dust and noise down and meet their um criteria. But there will be dust, there will be noise, but we'll mitigate it as much as possible.
How would you mitigate noise?
So um a lot of times we'll put um the tall construction fencing with sound blankets on it as one example. Um it does, it sounds like it won't do much, but it actually does a pretty good job. The other thing, as you noticed, is we put the, all the modular buildings on the other side of the multipurpose and the multipurpose will act a bit as a um a buffer. Um I think given our constraints, that might be about uh the best we can do. But we can certainly do the big drilling and the big um things, just like we talked about with the likely pure foundations or pile driving happening off hours. Um so finding that right balance, is that fair?
Because I'm a little bit concerned about the noise mitigation, just I I with all the regulations that are in place. But at the end of the day, I mean, kids need to be able to hear and know what's going on in the classroom. And I I I just, I'm wondering, I, you know, I, we have parents who are very upset that the portables are going to be where they are, right? And and we have to be respectful of 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 their concerns. And I understand that we, I'm I'm pretty confident we can mitigate around the dust and 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 um and methane gas and whatnot. But I am actually concerned about the noise impacting the the education, because we have kids with different needs. Um, you know, we have, I mean, it's just, I'm afraid it will be a lot of distraction. And I was actually under the impression a lot of demolition and everything will be done during the summer. And 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 would that be possible to do that and find ways to, I don't know, store? I don't know how much cost it's going to add. But I think we do have to be a little bit mindful about parents who are already concerned about everything else going on plus noise, because that's kind of news to me.
Will the, will the distance of the temporary housing abate some of the noise?
It will abate some of the noise. I will say propping open your um your classroom door probably isn't gonna help, right? I mean, and that's a big year old piece. Um we could certainly talk with Flint about it, yeah.
The mass of the multipurpose room, though, is a real help to us. It's actually a tremendous help.
And I mean, I've been through so many in my career and it hasn't been that disruptive for kids. I mean, just wanting to keep your door closed.
There's noise, there's there's noise. And what we don't wanna have, though, is the repetitive noise, like pile driving.
Right, right.
Pile driving. Right, like that. And you can't have that endlessly for like seven hours, right?
Yeah.
So that is something that's done when the kids aren't, yeah.
I will, I will say the scale is very different, but I am living through a home renovation right now. And just closing a bedroom door makes a significant difference. And I think the fact that all of these, all the interim housing is going to have air conditioning. And so, you know, whereas, whereas right now, like the white noise plus the fresh air coming from that versus like if you're propping open a school, like a classroom door to get some cooler air in or something like that, that may, that may help as well.
And they will have air conditioning, HVAC system, so that would largely mitigate, you know, because right now you have to open the windows.
Okay.
Okay.
And not all demolition is noisy, right? I mean, there's the big truck days, but there's a lot of demounting by hand or small equipment that happens as well.
Okay. And and I don't know if this is right time to talk about it. Keep carrying king tides at the flood zone and and where the portables are going to be located will be on a flood zone. And so, and that's the lower part of our district land. And so how do you mitigate, you know, people right now seem to have visions of kids walking through.
Through puddles, yeah.
Puddles, yeah. So I, how do you, how do you mitigate? Am I understanding? Yes, that that would be helpful to know.
So Anna, do you mind go in ahead two slides? We have the interim housing site plan in there. Um so we have to build these portals to the same code requirements of permanent construction. Yes. So what that means is that we have to have the finished floor, so the floor of the classroom one foot above the FEMA flood plane issue, which is higher than your current parking lot.
Yeah.
The um portables have a foundation system that maxes out at eighteen inches, right? So um we can put it on sites eighteen inches below where we want the finished floor. We have already planned that the the um portables closest to the creek will have to be on a concrete foundation that raises them up even further. So while the, and then we, as we've shown before, that um ramp system, rather than the old fashioned ramps you're used to seeing in portables, that building the deck system allows us to connect all of the buildings at that higher elevation.
Yeah.
And that our um access to that deck will be on the more western side uh adjacent to the multipurpose where we start to get a little bit higher. So that's the plan right now. Um does that mean there will never be standing water? I I can't say that, right? But it certainly is gonna meet all of the requirements and most of the water should be shedding under that deck system.
So um where will the drop off and pickup will be in 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 that configuration? Is it?
In the current um parking loop, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there won't be any additional parking onto the site.
Okay. So there will be on a rainy day, there'll be a ramp that kids walk on or the the the.
So the the idea is that in this area here, that we have the administration kind of facing the drop off to see the public when they come in. Um and but the entrance will likely be on this side to give us this area to do the ramp up. And then we will have most of this side on that deck. And then on this side, we'll have to do something similar uh because these portables closest to the creek will be at or below the FEMA flood plain. And so we'll come over here and there'll be a deck here with the ramp system on this end. So all the details of that are not worked out yet, but our civil engineer has learned to add the um sort of uh the gradients that we have to look at. We've also talked about the option of bringing this whole grade up. Because in the long term, it will be, or in the permanent solution, it will be up. We just don't know that we can get all of that work done within that summer. Um the ramp system allows us to do some offsite prefabrication of that ramp and get it on site as fast as possible. So that's where we think we are right now um uh is the deck system.
And that ramp has to hold the weight of a firetruck?
So the firetruck um access will come through, will come through here and here. And so we've um, the deck will actually be in this area connecting these buildings. And these will have their own ramp system closer to the building. Obviously, the scale's really hard to get the the minimum distance in there, what we're showing. But the detail will show that ramp on the north of the.
So just to clarify, there'll be more decks than what is showing up, you know, the red. I I'm kind of understanding the red as being the deck, but there will be more.
The red is the fire.
Fire trucks. So there'll be more decking built, so it will, the whole thing will be raised and kids don't have to walk through there. I mean, the the what parents are envisioning is kids walking on their plants.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, that's why we're investigating too, right? The the raising the whole thing or the deck. And it might be that it ends up some combination of that because of the.
Yeah.
That side.
Okay, great, okay.
In general, when it sounds ridiculous, it it's because it is, because the state won't allow us to do that with students.
Yeah.
So when, so when they're like, oh, I heard they're gonna have to wear, you know, their their boots every single day or, you know, something like that. It's like, that's not true.
No, but because what we, I think, I think we have to be understanding of the fact that the portables we have on our campuses are something that is very different than these, right? Those are big boxy, yellow, gray ugly things.
They're the same. No, they're the same. It's just that we have to deal with the grade issue that um doesn't appear to be um dealt with on your current ones.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, sorry. I I was just gonna add, I think, to to your comment before about the flooding. We just probably need to keep in mind for the however many days of the year where the primary flooding happens. So like that fire lane, uh the very kind of right bottom area, that turnaround point um at the end of the drive heading into car line, that is the area that floods. And there have been a couple of days this year where you actually can't drive through um without your car getting completely flooded. So both in terms of students on foot and on bike coming from um coming from the Bay Trail plus car line, thinking about what they, if plan B will be for.
Well, getting into.
Are we, are we able to use any of the demolished buildings as fill for that area? Is that what you're gonna think?
Well, that's what we're hoping, right? Is to take um almost all the concrete out of this building and use it as base building as a sustainable solution there. And um the other piece that's a big part of this, right? Is that you own a big piece of that of Sycamore um and have an easement with the city for access. So we have the potential, right, with this whole site to bring that up a bit too, to to meet the grades on our site, because it doesn't do us any good to raise our site this much if you can't get to it. So that's a whole part of this zoom out a little bit to see um how the grades all connect themselves once we get the permanent solution.
Great.
But that's in that.
And those, oh, sorry, I know we we have many slides to go through. Those four portables are okay enough that we can actually pick them up and move them?
The um P portables, we've moved some bad ones. They may have some repair that can be done right now, yeah.
We're gonna put them on bar.
Yeah.
It's gonna be the district coffee.
Specialist.
Like it.
So maybe we need to go back one for sequel.
Do we?
So um yeah, this is just uh focused on the Sequo process. And really, the point of this, like I explained last night, was to show how everything is intertwined.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that essentially we have to go, uh, we have to obtain Sequo approval uh before we get DSA approval. DSA will not approve our project until we have uh Sequo approval. But what is tied to Sequo is also DTSC approval and CGS approval and a lot of other um items related to Sequo. So again, everything is tied and we could not, we will not be able to obtain DSA approval and start construction until all agencies have approved the project.
So this diagram shows the sequel process kind of ending though in twenty twenty five, but yet we're looking for DSA approval on interim housing before that and also the.
That's correct. Right. So right now it's really tight, whereas like our hope is that um we can make a sequel if we're not in control of how long agencies also are reviewing, but Sequo has pretty uh determined amount of time for public comments and reviews. Uh, but right now it looks like by midsummer, we should be able to submit the um what is called the adminis administrative draft of the environmental impacts report um which will lead us into January when the board can ratify the Sequo document. Um, and that will allow us to get DSA approval by February, March of next year.
For the for.
For the interim housing. Um, obviously, that is the critical one because it is the first one. Once we have approval from Sequo, it applies to all part of the project.
Um, and then can you maybe just highlight for us, the public can engage in this project?
Sure.
Like, at what points does it become, you know, I see draft EIR public review period, is is that the only one in this graph?
So there are, are um as part of Sequo, there are two periods where documents are made public. The first one is when we uh essentially issue or submit the administrative draft, which would be midsummer, late summer. Um, so that will be public. The biggest one, though, it is, I believe it's forty five days, uh is when uh what is, it says draft EIR public review period. Uh, and that's when the the bigger um document is made available for comments, not just to the public, but also all the agencies. Um, so there there are really two periods for public reviews.
Okay, and all the agencies and.
That's clear.
The good news for us is the administrative draft and the draft um will start to identify the issues and the mitigation requirements, so we can get them into the documents.
And I wanna point out to that um originally, we uh we were going for um uh mitigated uh negative declaration.
Negative, right.
We have decided to proceed with an EIR, an environmental impact report, which is a focused EIR. Essentially, we're gonna focus on topics that we wanna go more in depth about, uh such as um remember, the.
Uh, the hazardous materials, hydraulic.
So it's gonna be more uh detailed than a regular report. That's why we chose to go that route, so there will be more information available and more study of those items.
Was that a response to any past commenting we might have added, or?
Yes.
Thank you. And it might be helpful to just wrap those conversations around like that was brought up on.
Correct. So we we essentially went through everything we heard and had to address through um concept and decided to incorporate that into the Sequo document.
And of course, that that study will be part of that.
And that thing in through us.
And that is uh regardless, we're gonna have to address, yes, but it will be a focus on it.
Okay. Thank you.
To be honest. Okay. Maybe two forward, please. Thank you. Um, so we did um deliver to the district a document on the conceptual design phase that they're reviewing. Um, I've just pulled the cover and next page and the um table of contents, which talked about the process and background of the site options, all of which you've of course seen, the interim campus, the conceptual design things, where we were at that board meeting when you made the final decision on location. And then the appendices have all of those geotechnical reports, the bay wave study reports, all of those reference documents in it, as well as meeting minutes and attendees at all of the events. Uh, one of the big areas I wanted to pull out of there was the draft program element, uh which is that space list and square footage uh related to it. As you recall, uh there was one developed in the facility's master plan. A big piece of this phase was validating that with the steering committee um and and the budget, right? Both both pieces became part of that discussion. Uh, we ended up uh just about the same um square footage of total square footage um in for net square footage, which is the usable square footage. The facility's master plan had anticipated a little bit more um inside circulation. If you remember, we decided to go with a more outdoor circulation that saved us a lot of square footage that in turn saves money. Um, I will point out, because it came up on Wednesday at our steering committee, is that, you know, uh we are designing with a target of eleven hundred students. That was the the um mission that was given to us by state loading standards. And I wanna make it clear, state facilities loading standards, which is usually what we use um to balance what the district might be actually loading at by contract or by um practice. Um, and this is also what you'll use for applying for state funds, is these um these numbers. There's probably capacity for twelve hundred students at this site. And that is, okay, you're gonna have to teach in that classroom all day, not just the two hours you might have this class or whatever. And you're gonna have to pretty consistently load those spaces. And the reason I point this out is there might be a prioritization that has to happen and we'll have to decide which of these enrichment spaces, or we may have to decide which of the enrichment spaces get prioritized or which may remain, as was originally expected, in some of the portable buildings. The little snag with having to move the PE portables, right? Throws them into a a minimum relocation and maximum that we have to find a home for them, right? And so those are the kinds of decisions that we will be bringing as prioritization at that end of the schematic design phase when we have the cost estimate of kind of finished conceptual design and how um and some choices for you for prioritization.
Uh, so I noticed in this program, unless it's called something else, the wellness center is not identified. Right now in the middle school, it's a very large room. I don't know that it needs to be so large going forward, but it needs to, I think it's an essential program.
Yeah, we talked about that.
We talked about that on Wednesday, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so we will capture that as well. Uh, next please. So I just wanna run quickly through steering committee uh three, because at that time, we didn't have uh the site and so we didn't bring all of that information to you. What we did get out of the steering committee that uh we brought some um feedback for you on their voting um was the pod configuration they wanted. And that is uh basically, they wanted to have grade level pods with the inclusion of science. So that is basically a twelve classroom pod uh that had both inside collaboration and outside collaborations in space, which of course uh complicates a two-story option, so we developed a pod concept for that. Uh, next please. Um, and some of the ideas, right, is that we can use this outdoor second floor deck um to get some of that outdoor space as well as uh putting furnishings out there and uh daylighting through it. Next please. When we um, the other option, and you see it in the green, is that the classrooms open into first an indoor collaboration space and then out to to this shared deck area. And this I, right now, is the preferred option of the group. You'll see in some later slides how we've integrated the science into the pod.
Have they shared, right? This is the preferred option?
Uh, because they like the inside and the outside uh collaboration space. Um, I will tell you, when we get to it, um, we're gonna go over the materials we showed on Wednesday, and there were some comments from the group, yeah.
So two issues, uh two questions. So if I look at this, are you using six um six portables to build that little cluster?
No, that's all permanent construction.
It's a permanent construction. Uh, this is permanent construction, we're part. Okay, oh no, okay, so I was almost confused.
Yes.
Okay.
We can go ahead a few, this, we're gonna get to this more in detail.
Yeah.
And then just a reminder, um, these were some of the um the things, they got the top votes in terms of a aesthetics for the exterior. We discussed why on each one. Some of them had to do with enclosed courtyard or outdoor connecting spaces. Of course, the Novelli library shows up on everybody's list um that um that helped guide us a little bit. Um, and then I think we shared uh the pod configuration was unanimous. Science being integrated into that pod was more or less unanimous. And we discussed more of this, uh you'll hear on our Wednesday, um pretty much split on whether one story or two story um works. And then how if we had extra money from mitigation, would we spend it um in the multipurpose? The other thing that came up, uh next, please Anna. Um, the other thing that came up was when we toured things, people felt that, they're like, oh, those classrooms are too small. So we took, uh thank you Sharon, and she had this, this is one of actually the larger classrooms in the pod because it's the corner. And uh the ones we're proposing are at or more or larger. And I was so interested by this conversation because the crazy shapes of those classrooms, to me, would make them feel less, not more, because furniture doesn't ha get handled in that very well. So I'm hoping that through this process, we can uh prove a little bit how um not only furniture solutions, but the layouts can um make these larger. Why are we capping at this number? Two reasons. One, we're square footage challenged for all the wishes. But two, this is the the state standard for um classrooms. And it uh once we exceed a thousand square feet, these are nine hundred and sixty or so, we need to have two exits out of every classroom and that just starts to complicate ex interior circulation and all sorts of things. So um, you know, this is what was in the original program, what we've programmed moving forward. I have never met a teacher in my life who doesn't say, I want my classroom bigger. Um, so this is not a surprise. It's just um whether it's a priority to keep making the classrooms larger or not.
So do we have, so I I don't, how, so collaboration space? And I'm I'm wondering the the collaboration space that will be in the new building, how does that compare to the existing building?
So it's about um what we're showing in these is plus or minus uh an extra classroom. But all, but um six or five classrooms open into it, so you can send a small group into it and still have eyes on them. Similar to what they have now, there'd just be more enclosure because they then open to the outside.
Yeah.
So we'll um go through a couple more, the expanded example in a little bit.
Okay.
I I think just as a, you know, um to take a position, maybe, uh, we just need to say we are following the California Department of Education standard classroom size of nine hundred and fifty square feet per classroom. Um, I know every teacher is like, I need more space, I need more space, but we just need to move, pick a size, and moving on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that's where we've um brought it to the steering committee, like it it's their job.
It's still a group chat conversation, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, next please. The other, um, and this is an area, a good area of conversation. We had um talked about, because we had heard a lot about uh maybe a future gym or a dream for a future gym, about surrounding um the multipurpose room with um the performing arts, so band, drama, orchestra, all of those. We got a good laundry list from the uh music department of the deficiencies of their spaces, including permits apparently. Um, but uh but then got a follow-up from uh Danny that um really what the site would prefer is to have the PE classrooms around that gym and that the um performing arts be co-located with the visual arts kind of in in one one place, right? So um a big question, I guess, if we're having a workshop here for a discussion, is um you have a very unusual model for PE for middle schools at the twenty eight to one um teacher ratio and each of them have their own room. Normally, we'll see a middle school where like two classes will come together and be taught in a bigger environment. And each each class doesn't start in a room. They start at the gym and then go out to either outdoor play areas or yoga rooms or um weight training rooms or something else. And um so we had proposed, and you'll see it a little later, um uh reclaiming the existing spaces to get those six um PE rooms. So we're taking orchestra and making a PE and moving orchestra, right, and all of that. And then heard that those are gonna be too small for what's happening. And I just, I just need to understand, I think, a little bit what those classrooms are used for. Are they the du actual direct instruction or is it just the place you meet before you go to the the next thing?
My my sense is it's it's both. And that like on rainy days, then they will do it and they'll like do, I don't know, sit out, that's what things like that in the in the portables.
Yeah.
Um, and as weather permits, then they move outside and do plenty out there. I actually don't know how much they actually do in the NPR versus.
Right. And I think we have a meeting, it is coming up, right? But I wanted kind of your direction, because what you give up kind of in this is a dedicated, say, dance yoga room. And and you know, that are large, right, if we took those six classrooms and aggregated the space, you would maybe get some more multipurpose, larger spaces. But that might not support your model, right?
I guess it would beg the question, how many PE classes are happening simultaneously?
Well, we have three PE teachers.
Right, they would all go.
Correct.
Mean other than when their preps aren't.
So I I don't know, I don't know what they got.
They said they have six.
We have, we have two PE classrooms inside the gym, but each have a teacher assigned to it. We also have the four portables outside that are assigned that are um focused for PE as well.
This is why I have questions, because she'll.
But we have six teachers, though. You know, the five versus six.
Yeah, and so this is, I started here in the district in twenty twenty, and so since I've been here, we've started folk, the the requests have come in for me. So when I first started here during COVID, we added the two PE rooms to, so they can function as more spaces for teachers in the gym. And then the last, and then we already had two outside in the PE, and then since we stopped using the um the changing rooms outside this last year, now we then removed the the um the storage that was in there, and now we have also those, so now we have six together.
I have a question about that, like what happens in winter right now on rainy day? Like, because to me, that's the question should focus on, right? That's when we have the space constraints. Like where, if it's a normal nice day, how many classes are inside, outside? If it's so winter on a rainy day, where do classes take place?
They're doing it if they have the portable assigned as
Yeah.
the teacher's classroom, they're doing it in the portable.
Yeah.
Right.
Like that little portable, they're doing PE?
Well, their portables are bigger than a classroom.
Yes.
Okay.
And also they can do like, you can pull your health unit out or do, you know, like there's other, or you can study the introduction to
Okay.
you know, whatever the next unit is.
And apparently, only one class is actually using the gym. So twenty eight people as opposed to, say, two classes that share.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So those are just different models that um we wanna make sure we accommodate correctly. And it is the vision going forward to keep doing what you're currently doing.
I I I think it's hard to have the discussion without having the like understanding of what's happening simultaneously.
Yeah. Yeah, and we need them on main, eh, with the master schedule.
But yeah. I personally, it sounds much more compelling to me to have different spaces that serve, you know, to your point. you know, to your point, yoga or weights or something, so that it's not just the same things repeated or in individual teacher space, but how do you best utilize the space more in the variety of activities that they do?
And it does leverage it up a bit, I think.
I, I think the multi-purpose room slash gym can be shared by two classes simultaneously.
Oh, yeah. So I'm, I'm kind of shocked that it's only.
Yeah, the.
Because it's all what we've heard so far, and that's advocating, right?
Right, right.
And of course you advocate for.
Right.
For your thing, but I just, if we're gonna spend money renovating this space and potentially adding space for those PE portables that we're now displacing, we wanna kind of have a vision of what it should be, not what it has been, right? Unless that's intentional.
So Dr. Hoffman, do you, having middle school experience, have any thoughts on that? Or is there a need for more discussion and get back to our team later?
I, I think it's really about flex space, right? I mean, to me, absolutely, two classes can be at the gym at the same time. Four classes can be at the gym at the same time, you know, it's, it's, so, to me, at some point, it's also budgetary. What, what are we, what, what will we not do because we are building six portables? And, you know, I just, I, I'm not sure. I'm used to also, like, a gym with a practice court where you can also, you know, I mean, there's other options. I just, what I would like to know is what's the net dollar amount that would be spent doing that? And how might that impact other athletic facilities that our staff might access?
And so, this might be, it sounds like, um, our meeting in May, we will get the PE instructional model to influence, uh, everything we're doing. But then when we come back to a schematic design with that budget, we will have a list of priorities, right? And that might be a good time to say, um, we have a, a big list for this thing. It's going to preclude you perhaps from adding a yoga room or another piece. How do we balance that?
Well, and I guess one of the things in this is mainly just i- in terms of the whole scope of the project, is like, what are standard practices? Like, I think we need to start with, what is the guidance in other districts? We built a theater, athletics, gymnasium and dance building in Rona Park, it's beautiful. We, that was the only thing we were doing, um, other than painting our schools. Um, and so we had a lot of, of resources that this project doesn't have. And, you know, I, I just wonder how much we should and can do when we aren't comparing with what regular standards are.
Yeah, and I can reuse some other middle school examples, um, to help inform that and what we're doing there. The fact you don't change for PE is also an unusual middle school model and might change the delivery a little bit of how intensely you deliver PE.
You do, you do, until Danny.
Yeah. We got your hands down.
Yes, which you never have to use.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, that, it, it depended on the principal, frankly, you know, new principal, yeah, right?
Okay, yeah, I know, let's go.
So I have another question, your big order.
Oh, no, no jury, it's for issue.
Yeah, right, so.
But that happens with port.
That changing seems weird.
Although, well, although I guess if you wanna maximize, if you wanna maximize your time.
I think some of the teachers appreciate it.
Not having.
Not, the non-dressing.
No, just having, like, kids get, you know, take your dirty stinky PT teacher off to the other.
I mean, at your.
I know, but.
That even just like having appropriate clothing or running around in.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Not one thing, as far as them were.
That's true.
Exactly, I mean, I, uh, vice versa, yeah.
Yeah, it makes delivery of that PE a little bit.
I, like, probably, yeah, like.
So again, I guess the process you're going to pursue would be what, to getting some more clarity on that?
So we will meet with the PE department, um, I assume the principal will sit in on all those departmental meetings. We'll bring back to you their list and their wish list, um, and what that looks like and how it ties to how they're currently delivering instruction. And then, um, I think it'll be kind of the board and administrations, um, is this how we want to deliver physical education moving forward at the middle school?
Um, is that something when we have that conversation with us that, um, Sarah can be, can be part of to help get that voice to the middle school perspective? Because I think how, how that's executed, um, would be important to have somebody in the room who can.
Yeah, potentially, I could be department leader, I think, I think again, it goes, to me, we have to start with the parameters because six classrooms is, and dance, and, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that, again, to be exact, things are principal dependent or department dependent, uh, you know, we need a context for having those conversations. And to me, there's.
It's a lot of resources for.
Gotta be, right.
One period of the day.
Yeah. I just had also a very quick question as it relates to, you know, the steering committee's job. And, um, do we have a PE teacher on that?
We do.
And do we have a science teacher on that?
We do. Okay. And they will also be in those one-on-one meetings, um, where we'll focus on just their department, um, so.
Department was asked for.
Right, yeah.
Right, because Ellie and I, when we started this process, there was a, um, framework that was used to elicit some kind of feedback on general parameters. But, uh, I know it was very short, it wasn't really a deep dive. And I wonder about this opportunity to look at research and look forward for the next fifty years on how do we best design these spaces?
The facilities master plan you're referring to, I think, uh, that was the quick process?
Well, no, that, that I wasn't here for, but after it was, hey, we're crafting the bond, what are some things that we want to include in the bond? And things like, oh, we're gonna, maybe we'll wanna have a STEM room, and they wanna. So I, I was, you know, wondering, we haven't spoken about that, okay, with, did that information, where is it? Is it informing any practice? And how are we informing what spaces we're actually going to build?
So the FMP informed a lot of it for us. I will tell you, based on that twelve hundred and six student, uh, count, you should have lots of space that can be multi-use for enrichment, right? We have three art rooms, we have three, um, performing art spaces, uh, plus drama. Um, so we have a media center like you have now that could be done in a way that makes it very, um, multi-purpose, you know, water, sinks and water and other things. I don't think space should be the problem, as long as, um, there's an understanding that every room isn't owned, even if I only teach one period.
Because performing arts is, and dance, PE are synonymous in some senses.
Yes, yes, I see, yes. And often we'll do a drama room with some curtains, a black box, but it's got a wood floor and in two periods of the day, it's dance. One period is drama, two periods, it's yoga. And nobody owns, the teachers don't own that space, they rotate through it.
Yeah, so these spaces, we should be designing a school where the spaces are utilized.
Five-period day, yes, yeah.
Five-period day, five-ways, we, um.
With the, like, the offices or home, you know, meaning that the.
Even teacher collaboration space is which we're putting in each wing.
So I noticed that Maker Space was, says it's changed to media room in the program, what does that mean?
Um, that meant that between science and the visual arts, they felt the maker component should be integrated into the pods or into the arts room. Um, and so the media room had, wasn't specifically identified in the original program, so we blocked those. And it's the intention that the collaboration spaces will have some storage for, uh, maker pieces. Nobody knew what the maker program was and felt like maker. And I, I agree with them on this, maker at its strength is integrated into the curriculum. Unless you have a separate maker program that is a chosen elective. And if I'm being honest, you have so many electives on this campus already. I don't know how for eight hundred kids, that elective, uh, happens. And it certainly could happen in that multi-purpose, uh, space or an art room that we designed in a flexible way. To support everything from robotics to, you know, map making adjacent to a social sciences.
Yes, right, I, I think that's a great idea, bringing up flexibility, because you don't know what's going to change.
Right, yeah.
So.
We see a lot of maker programs die on the vine because it's not a five-period elective, uh, every day. And what teachers really want is, I want those resources in my class because we're doing private-based learning.
Yeah.
And we want the projects to support our curriculum, not to go to a separate one.
Yeah, right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it also feels much more equitable so that more, more students are getting access to that kind of programming versus I have to choose this as one of my very few options of an elective during the day. So I feel like it lines up with where our, our goals are for the district, so.
So storage, um, technology, right, those are the things in the collaboration space that are good starting points, or especially a tech-based, uh, maker program. If we wanna start bringing in, uh, drill presses and saws, different program and probably belongs in either supporting drama, like scene building kind of thing, or supporting the art.
Have you seen the equipment that's in the current Maker Space in the middle school? Okay, so, you know, pretty decent sized laser cutter and tools.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I don't know, um, nobody seemed to be able to address how often that got used from not being fully staffed all day.
Similar to when Tam bu- built its first, you know, state-of-the-art room that people could go use for twenty-first century learning and.
Everybody would.
What do you do?
I already want it, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah. Okay, um, if we can go to the next couple. Um, I wanted to remind the big ideas that were in the facilities master plan, which we've seen before. And then on the next one, Anna, um, the brainstorming of the steering committee, um, I wouldn't say those are new ideas, they're augmenting, uh, the ideas or being more specific about them with healthy, sustainable buildings, inclusive campus, ease of maintenance and operation, safety and security. And to the resilience you all talked about and flexibility, and then a center of community.
So can I, uh, just say something about that? Like, I, I thought that maybe this project, just, just as we do in LCAP and we use that to guide our education, that this project can have a mission statement as well. And, you know, it's something we just kind of like have as a goal. The North Star, as we've talked about, North Star that's for this building. And, uh, I don't know if that's possible, still, I don't know how we do that, I just, you know.
The facilities master plan, we don't have the whole thing here. It does, uh, outline your entire vision for a middle school learner.
Yeah, it's, I'm thinking.
Oh, okay.
It's just, it's just long and big, you know, it's, and, um, I don't know, we could just condense that, I just wanted to kind of have that as a conversation.
Okay.
What, you know, how did this board see reading that and then, you know, moving forward and everything?
You know, I like that idea because it helps us with our messaging. And I really don't, like, I'm asking all these questions, I, I don't really know what is our point with building a new building except for, we had an old building, which to me is not inspiring. So what's our ins- what's our North Star, what's our inspiration?
Yeah.
It, you know, as we know how critical space is.
Air conditioning?
Now, it's, it's air conditioning, generator generation.
No, but like, look at Old Mill, and you look there, the old buildings, they're old, you know, I.
It's necessary, it's necessary, it's horrible.
I know, but, but I look at other campuses, to be honest, they are old. They are, they are, you know, I look at Tam Valley and Strawberry, it's almost embarrassing. I mean, it's, I'm being totally honest, I mean.
It's like the rest of California, though, I guess, there's nothing that can.
Yeah, but the, I've seen places where the buildings are much nicer, right? And we are having, spending two hundred million dollars for this building. And then I have, I have, I have parents telling me, well, little school is perfectly fine when you compare it to other standards. Why are we even doing this and it's going to disrupt my kid's education? And, and it, it happens so that I hear a lot more because my child is in fourth grade. So I get to hear a lot of concerns that other fourth grade parents are having. And I'm even hearing, I'm starting to hear things like, I wish the old building will stay so my kid's education won't be disrupted. So we have to kind of inspire our parent community. Other than, oh, we want a brand-new spanking building just for the middle school when we have, you know, and when we, you know, I mean, I look at Edna and I look at Old Mills, probably other schools, that's not equity in terms of buildings, right? We, we have two different standards in our district with one school being Brand New Elementary, the other four being really old. And then now we have this big middle school and for a while, we're not going to really bring other buildings to, you know, elementary school buildings to this standard. So I think we have to motivate people why we need this middle school.
That wasn't the conversation ten years ago, though. When Edna McGuire was built, people didn't look at it as an inequitable thing. You went to Park and an older hundred-year building, what you went to Edna McGuire, like, it just, it wasn't part of the conversation. That's a new, it's a new thing. And it's, it's too bad that people are looking at it that way, because what you really should be looking at is my education is same.
Yes, but no.
But so, I don't wanna get too far all the global here.
I thought, so on the other hand, yeah, but on the other hand, we are seeing this brand-new building will be, you know, to position our kids to be for future generations and look at all these new things. Edna has that, other schools don't have it. So I kind of feel like we have to really inspire when we are spending this money and, and, and present to the community why we are doing this. And, 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 and I think, I do think there's a really concern among other school parents, maybe not at Edna, that there is not equity among our school buildings.
This sounds like the, uh, Measure A, Tam, Tam, yeah.
I know, but it is funny, you know, but I have visited just to, before I endorsed Measure A, I have visited all the schools, right? And, and when I went to visit, um, Archie Williams, their buildings were in so much better shape than Tam and Glenwood. And you visit our school buildings, they're not on the same standard. So I think it's not Measure A talk, I think there is a real differences in how our school can.
And I, and I, and I don't disagree because my kid went to both Old Mill and to Edna, so I've seen both ends of the spectrum.
Yeah. Yes, yeah.
Um, should we?
No, no, but that's fine, so, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think, I think, so between this page and the next page, I'm wondering if we can set, you know, um, set a mission statement, I think.
Yeah, I think, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna write the second.
Yeah.
Through that.
And we can attempt to draft, my guess is the reason you don't, didn't get one in the FMP is that everybody wanted all of these things in it, and next thing you know, it was three paragraphs. So I think the big idea, um, would be to have the mission statement sort of above the big idea.
Yeah.
So that all these things were complimentary to it.
And then what I think would, you know, also, let's excite the kids, so.
Yeah.
Make it, make it inspiring for kids and then, so that we can start to have a skeleton, uh, that we can start to dress, you know, and then people, when they're in it, or they can get excited about it. Um, and just very briefly, I just came back from Singapore, which is a very architecturally inspiring place. And what I noticed. There's a sense, but there's a sense about it. I just got a sense like, um, you, like, you know, taxi drivers are bought into the space, like, they, their energy to drive you around, right, you should see and do it. And I'm feeling like, maybe we could give some excitement and energy around this really historic building.
Yeah, and we had, uh, great sessions with the kids, right?
Yeah.
Their opinions, definitely.
Thank you.
So, okay, okay, a couple forwards. I know that Natalie has to leave soon. Um, so one of the things we start, uh, with is a site analysis. Uh, the arrows you see with the sun around is the sun angles and how the sun moves. And we've talked a lot about orientation in the past when we discuss things. And so wanted to make sure that, um, you understood, we look at things like prevailing winds and where the traffic's coming from. The reason we have the three areas, Muir Woods, Mount Tam and Richardson Bay, if you go to the next one.
Can I ask what that big blue arrow is real quickly?
The wind.
Uh, oh, that was a, that was towards a, a view towards Richardson Bay, yeah. Um, so why, what we do with those then is come to an inspiration. Um, and that inspiration has the opportunity to influence the architecture. And so we, we drew on your beautiful place, since we've heard so much about it, um, from the community along the way, um, starting with this John Muir quote and, uh, the pines being our gateway, um, for education, for arts, for open minds, for inclusiveness, for all of the words we heard from both students and staff. Um, what we like to do then is take those, um, uh, literal, um, images and translate them to architectural response. Next please. Next please. So for example, um. The Muir Woods, uh. Pathways here, can those boardwalks influence how we move students from place to place? Um, the architecture of the columns there being very tree-like and branch-like to a wooden canopy. Um, very natural outdoor places, sitting on stumps in some places, not necessarily, or rocks, not necessarily at tables. Even how the branches, um, this happens to be a school we did in Truckee. The, um, branches influence the handrails and other things. And then this concept of gateways, how are we welcoming and providing cover? Next, please.
Is it Alder Creek Middle?
Um, yes, yeah, Walter Creek, you know, that's well.
Is that about your place?
Yes. Um, and then looking again at Mount Tam and how we take roof forms, this is the one we, uh, visited. How we look at some green roofs, how we integrate, um, those mountain forms in the interior space. But even in small ways, how we make levels, uh, within the outdoor spaces for students to, um, move up, if you will.
Can I ask you about the green roof thing?
Yes.
How difficult is it to maintain?
Uh, it looks amazing.
Yeah.
And and it would be incredible to have, but I'm kind of, I'm imagining.
It depends on the application, if I'm being honest, right?
Yes. Yeah.
Um, yeah, and she's.
I love them. I do not advocate them for the school.
Yeah, because I I would think it's really hard to maintain, and if you need a new roof, and and it might not.
Grow these on it.
So I, if, honey, if you say that to us.
Yeah.
In my last one district, Cormac's Middle and El Cerrito had a green roof. And one of the things that we learned from there is. Where the soil was, it wasn't deep enough to be able to keep those plants, um, growing. So that's one of the lessons learned that I would, that I would share with the group, because we're decided, we designed something like that. And also the harness system that's needed to have an employee on top and looking at the job descriptions and make sure they.
Yeah.
Got into a situation where we had to bring out.
I wonder why you're here.
We had to bring, um.
But they were teens.
I know. Well, we had to bring out like companies. And it was a nice one because it was not a, uh, it was not driving. It was a little.
I I'm very keen.
Look at the highlights and kind of, you know, how many inside those, yeah.
I I just am thinking that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Very, very heavy, too.
Yeah, I I'm thinking that's just not a good idea.
So when we get to the concepts, I'll just tell you, it was in a small area where you're gonna look at it. Um, so then again, another John Muir quote, we heard a lot about inclusiveness, um, from the community and the students. So how, um, one thing is attached to the rest of the world. So again, gateways. Places together that have a natural feel, uh, how we do wayfinding, which I realized is my word, not everybody else's. Um, so signage and other things that help direct you around the campus. This happens to be, uh, one we did around continents, but we could do it around your natural spaces. But also using, um, colors and material and small gathering amphitheater spaces.
That sounds amazing.
And then similarly, taking the the bay and the bridge, um, this is also Alder Creek. Um, this is, um, something we did in the concrete, polished concrete floor, so the red of the dirt. So that when it's coming off your shoes, it's not a mess, but a facsimile of Donner Lake as a teaching tool, but also a, um. Uh, welcoming piece. But, you know, you can start to see those branches in the structural system, the daylight, uh, the other components. So these are the influences or the inspiration, assuming you all concur with this kind of natural marine. Um, type direction.
Right. That's something. But that in and of itself is is, um, it also ties into a vision of the open statement.
That's a mystery.
So there's a way, an interesting way to do that. And that's, thank you, it's like.
So. You know, I like, what I see is.
Well, we kept on the thought of Vista.
And and it's like, yeah, that's, that's true Vista, that is not, that's not how it is.
Hold on, I'm gonna do a time check. What time do you have to go?
I mean, I've got like. I'd say you have to tend it.
How many more slides do we have?
Cause we have a lot.
Yeah.
We have a lot. I didn't know that, oh, there, there's two things that I, I mean, I I called for this.
Yeah.
I I heard all this. I'm not the one who needs to hear that.
Yeah.
But, you know, one of the things I really wanted to touch on was sustainability, which is gonna come up. And, you know, um, I'll let you guys. Talk about it, but, um, kind of like arable, orgult as that. And then also, you know, I really wanted to get to the one story, two stories.
Yeah.
But I don't know, we.
Maybe just maybe we can look through the steering committee options, because that ties into the inspirations and behind.
Yeah, yes. And then we can come back to this.
Yeah, I think that's.
State of the.
Yeah, yes.
We need something, something inspiring on our cage for Medici because right now there's nothing like those photos, maybe. But, you know, it's because people are, yeah.
The secret.
Culture.
Yeah.
There you have it.
A little video slaying it to.
I'm gonna spend a little more time on the first option, cause then the other two will be faster because we'll have gone through some of the pieces and parts. Um, the existing gym, this is the concept where we've surrounded it with PE rooms, again, for your consideration. And a future building, we, we put gyms, stage, all of those, cause some people want performing arts, some people want gym. Um, and then this is a two-story, two-building complex. Um, on the ground floor of this building is a pod for a grade level. On the second floor is a pod for a grade level. In this building on the ground floor is administration and library, um, part of the, um, same complex with a pod level above that. And then that arts complex we talked about with visual and performing arts, all part of it. This is not by any dimension designed, but then this is that large kind of protected gathering space. That can be articulated as we've shown a small amphitheater here that the bandroom could open onto. But there could be larger amphitheaters, um, shade structures, other canopy structures like we showed in the inspiration photos. Next, please.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Of course.
So kids are still coming in through the centralized administration building?
If, um, we go back to the last one. So we had a good conversation about this, uh. The, this hinge point was our original intended one with administration right here.
Yeah.
So you come into administration, there is a gateway here that can be locked.
Yeah.
And so you're only led on campus as a public.
Yeah.
When, uh, but you can open this in the morning when the flood of kids are here. You'll see in one of the other options that this. Center spine becomes another potential access point that gives us a little bit more walk past the library.
Yeah.
Component. And I think we could make either of those work in this scheme.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So a second floor, as I mentioned, the pods, um, primarily being the second floor. There'd be a connecting bridge and stairwell, as well as a stair in each pod for them to move up and down there. And then this kind of, uh, please don't look at it as detailed design, um, because this is really intended for our meetings with the departments. But again, you might come in, check in with reception, be led out here. Um, students could come from the campus side to see counselors, speech therapists and others. Uh, the principal eyes on the quad space, then your, your boardroom, staff workroom. And again, staff could kind of tuck in the back door to, to get to the lounge or their mail, uh, without leaving. We've shown a staff patio here, but as I said, we could flip some of these pieces if this was the better gateway.
What's a staff patio?
Um, it's kind of just a place to go eat lunch.
Okay.
Yeah. And in this case, we kind of have a space on this ground floor. That's going to be covered by the second floor above, so it becomes a, a covered outdoor space that probably could be used mostly year-round. Um, that media room we mentioned, that might end up being flexible, um, maker-type space if it needs to be. And could be observed by the librarian. Sorry, there's supposed to be a wall here. The cafe piece, again, a similar model, students could come into the cafe, servery and back out. And then, uh, the reading room opens immediately on the quad. We could have some, you know, roll-up doors, but we could also create a more. Learner-focused, small patio space there. Next, please. This was, as I mentioned, how we integrated science, uh, into that pod we showed earlier. So, uh, five rooms on each side of a collaboration space. Each pod would have its own, uh, multi-fикчу restroom, space, staff restroom, custodial space, and the science rooms. And, um, this is pretty much where the group has landed. They can be outside, put kids out on this deck. And so eyes will be on them, right? Because they're adjacent to their room. Now, I will tell you, um, just to throw the controversies, uh, that we heard on Wednesday. There is still a group of the steering committee that prefers the one story that we'll get to. Um, but if not, would really like some sort of, I'll call it a racetrack or something that allows them outside doors as well as the center doors. Um, wouldn't be my recommendation, but it is a topic of discussion.
Maybe one or two individuals.
It was two.
Not a majority. I mean, it's not my recommendation.
Yeah, so next, please. I'm trying to get through these for Natalie here. Uh, again, the, the three arts rooms, drama corps, orchestra, band. The collaboration hall we see as that place to send students, but also a gallery space for student art and other things. And how that's articulated. I mentioned taking the existing, um, music room. Two PE classrooms, taking back choir and instrument or and, um, orchestra. Uh, for PE classrooms, and then the two would remain. When we renovate this, I will tell you, the concern being that these are too small. So that's what's prompted this kind of conversation about the vision for PE. And then we had 3D models, not design, no materials applied, but just starting to say. Um, if we're going to complement, for example, the community center, if we're going to reach to Mount Tam in terms of, uh, views. And, and even expression, um, using, uh, those roof forms. So this little tiny roof was my piece, I, of green roof in my head, because that was the piece we would be trying to look over, right? Well, we can use other materials. What we don't want, what we don't want is a roof that's bright white and glaring to everybody. Right? Um, second option uses the same kit of parts, so we don't have to go through all the plans again. Um, with the same library administration on the ground floor and the upstairs with the pods and this space. But instead, we're, we're splayed like this, and perhaps, right, we could come in here, but we could also make that center spine work. With a connecting bridge and stairwells, as well as the stairwells inside. Again, same kit of parts. The, um, primary difference here, and I will tell you, some like this one, some like the other one. Uh, was how, um, these different outdoor spaces were, um, separated, right? Cause this, this won't be here, certainly not in my career, I don't think. Uh, yours, Elizabeth? I don't know. So there's a large.
Lots of community gives us twenty-seven, no, you don't.
Yes, exactly. So this is a very large outdoor space. But it is on the busy road and it might be a footprint for the future. But there are other things that are very nice about this. I, you know, these stairs could become a big gathering stair to an amphitheater, right? There's a lot of opportunity there. That we can separate, you know, uh, a food service component over here, a drama gathering. You know, there's opportunity in this one as well. Um.
Can I ask you?
Of course.
So maybe I spent too many days of my high school cutting classes. I don't know where you're going. There's so much more to knowledge. How do you contain the kids across different buildings? Is there going to be a wall around, like dancing around? I I just like.
So we, right now, we intend to fence the entire site.
Yeah.
Um, because that's sort of our single point of entry. So after, um. After school, kids get on campus first thing in the morning, the fence gets closed down and everyone's directed through that single point of entry. That's the typical model today, um, that we do. And then these walkways connect, um, do connect those two buildings.
Okay, I I just.
No, good question.
I I just see.
We all bring our own experience to the table. Next, please.
I told you if we just walked up and nobody would ever notice you. So then, we used to be off-campus.
And you can see just the, the differences. We've used the same building model. It might not be the exact same building model. But the, um, the primary difference, right, is that, um, separation of the, uh, the outdoor spaces. There are things that I think work really well about this, the containment of that quad, for example.
Yeah.
Um, so that has some opportunity. And then.
Okay, can I just go back to, I have to get that one I can do, um. So I'm looking at that future gym site, that green area that's right next to the D road.
Uh-huh. Oh, on the last one.
Landscaping, so that, is that, is the landscaping of privacy and?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And we would probably use the two walls that don't have a lot of exposure for kids facing the road, right? And that the, the doors and things would face toward the inner part of the campus, cause that's kind of what we're doing is. Making a big hug around this quad space. Um, so then the one story was the big alternative Sharon wanted folks to look at. I will tell you, this is the least developed, cause we didn't think we were going there, but, um, it, it, after the meeting, um, we, we maybe. There's, um, three, uh, of those equal pods, six, seven, eight. Um. An administrative building, again, not, not fully designed, th- those same fence lines, so you're pushed through here after hours. The same gym configuration, but instead of the library, um, being part of that ground floor entry sequence. It's part of what's anchoring the inner quad space. And then we've put the arts, um, arts either connected or not, but kind of up in this area. The conversation here was I get my immediate door outside, right? And, um, that. It felt less like somebody is going upstairs, right, for other things. There was conversation about moving this building out or moving it this way to create the quad. Um, Sharon and I, I think, dissuaded that, well, I don't know if we did, but, um, from a day lighting and orientation standpoint. That we'd have to look at something very different to start giving it all that west exposure. Um, but that pushing it kind of this way to expand this quad could work. And then we talked a little bit about the library and things people wanted to do, but generally. Um, and obviously the pros and cons here, the pro is that every room can have an outside door. If that's what you want, right? Um, and, uh, that, um. But the concern that we really are using all of our real estate to, for buildings.
So I, yeah, I just think that's kind of. It, yeah, it's not as aesthetically balanced, in my opinion.
And we can go a couple more intro.
And then I worry about the safety of every door having, and every.
Well, we, we also have, we have that at a number of our campuses, so I don't think that that's necessarily what we put as like person for most. Because if that's a priority, well, then we have a lot of work to do across all of our campuses.
Yeah, yeah.
But I do think that in terms of thinking about sustainability and. Being stewards of the land that we're putting this on, building across all of it.
Yeah.
Feels like not, not the most efficient use of the land that we have.
We don't possibly do.
And then you don't have that available for outdoor gap, like as much.
Well, also, you know, I made the point that it was only in twenty twelve when we had to add the portables outside on the south side of the gym. Because we were at such capacity with our student body here. And that could happen again. And in this kind of scenario, it's like, wow, you know, where are you gonna put that?
They're all going out here, right?
Yeah. So I, I agree. I don't like the use of what I felt like was every square footage of the site.
Yeah.
Um, and it felt a little sprawly. I, I will maintain that I disagree that we should put exterior doors, uh, excessive exterior doors. Just because they're used to it right now, I don't think. I don't think it's not safe.
Not as safe.
It's not as safe. And, you know, I was thinking like, you know, what if we had to, what, you know, programmatically, your every single door is got a complicated locking system. It's got, it's going to be alarmed. It's going to have a building integrated canopy over it. It's, you know, accessibility.
Well, and someone props it open and it's left open.
Yeah, right. And then also accessibility to every single door. Right now, if the site undulates on the backsides of these buildings a little bit, we don't have to make the door accessible. But we will have to completely level everything or make sure that it is.
It does cost increasingly.
Oh, we add cost, decrease that.
Yeah.
I also think, I might have to be gone too. So, but like, you know, I also think, this is California. We live in one of the nicest weather places in the United States, you know? And we should have outdoor, like open outdoor campus that kids could go out and enjoy. And also, another thing I don't like about this is library is not part of the main building. And to me, like, I, I go to the board meeting by at the library and I'm looking at books, then it makes me want to read these books. And, and if it's separated into a building, I could tell you my kid is never want to go there.
Are you, you have to leave, are you looking for direction today on how to proceed?
Certainly one story versus two story, which is.
Can you go back to the distortion very quickly?
Of course. The steering committee, the majority was leaning towards option two.
Option two, which is this one. Yeah.
Like one and two, because I think they both have.
Which one is one again?
Uh, one, if we. This one.
Side by side.
That got, it was the difference between the bigger quad space, right? Because the buildings create a bit of a wall along Sycamore. Or the splayed version that creates the biggest, biggest space here, but spaces in between.
And what's that building in the front again?
This is the arts building.
So what I like about this too is, it's just instantaneous response. It reminds me of other more upper grade. Yeah, who's into arts and, you know, and so organically, I like that. I also like that there is a buffer. And I don't like that empty yard on the side potential for whatever. Because I watch kids, they don't.
Any other option?
I thought, they don't tend to want, they, they don't go over there. There's like something weird about that corner. Yeah, it's not, it's like there's something, I mean, I don't know, there's some Indian River site or whatever. It's just done.
Sure. Anna, could you go to the other option real quick?
I'd love to see real quick what I like about that one, though, is that the, right now, the, the open, oh, then the other one, side by side. The open space is that has a connection to the marsh. And it has a connection further beyond in a way. So it, it's not just open on our campus, but it's going to be even more spacious. Because you've got, this one, like in the upper, you know, the, the green space is connected to the marsh.
And, and to the bridge right over, yeah.
So it expands even more spatially, I don't know, I can say that.
It's, it feels more open to me with the view.
Yeah.
Whereas the other one, but why don't the teachers like this?
No, they do.
They, they were, I mean, there were more for option two, but it wasn't like consensus, I wouldn't say, would you, Sharon?
I see there's a perspective that, that if you're on the ground floor, it's better maybe. And so there's a perceived equity issue that if I have a classroom the upstairs, I don't get access to the ground in the same way that I would.
Well, you have better lighting.
What they like in option two is also the connection between the two building and the potentially big gathering space.
Yeah, I mean, I like that too.
In option two.
Uh, and sorry, Anna.
No, no, that's fine.
And just go to floor plan.
Uh, like these spaces.
But the gray space, because the building connection, it felt like they were more connected.
So, um, because you, you mentioned that that gray space is a, you know, on the second floor, it could be a, like a very large, uh, what's it, it's a bridge.
Sure, right.
And like, you know, if the whole school, largely, the whole school can gather in that space. Maybe the upper grades upstairs, maybe the six and seven, they're sims.
And they're looking down from the bridge, right? Um, those kinds of things. But I think if you go to the other option, if there are good reasons to like that, sorry. Good, good, good at this. Uh, no, the first one.
One more, yeah.
We also see this, oops, one more, there we go. We also see this being a similar bridge, right? And so we could have a big gather stair.
Yeah.
Come off of that, that could act as outdoor amphitheater seating too, to a much larger quad that.
What I like about that too, I'm sorry, middle schoolers, we love to throw things. You know, I just could see that being an issue.
I really like.
There's all sorts of second floor debt here.
Yeah.
I really like that option better, although because it keeps the kids away from Camino Alto.
Yeah.
And, and I always like walk around Camino Alto, like drive by Camino Alto. And, and it's just is not a good place for kids to hang.
Yeah.
And this forces them away from Camino Alto, gives them more privacy. You know, because, you know, and, and it's, that's one place for you to supervise kids, not have to worry about that empty space that's divided from the rest of the campus.
Well, the reason for the empty space, though, I mean, you call them a space, but you know that the sixth grade place base here is separated specifically from seventh grade name. Because sixth graders coming into middle school are still essentially just fifth graders from elementary school.
And they are a little bit intimidated by it.
So they are, they aren't separated deliberately to, you know. So there is, I think, and that is a programmatic aspect of how the school functions that I think we want to maintain. Of course, we should check with administration and those teachers and.
And it might be that this wedge becomes a sixth grade place, yeah. Um, I also think that if I'm being, I think I'm summarizing this correctly, that the steering committee's passion about options was more about one story and two and less between the two, two-story options. Is that fair? Yeah, I think.
So how many, so what was the divide between one and two story?
Two people. One, one at first, and then a friend came along. Uh, two people were the first, the ones. With everybody.
It wasn't mine.
Okay, fine, okay. So, I mean, we can continue with the other option too, but this, it's really helpful for us if we can.
Well, we're not going to burn up more of your fee and studying.
Okay.
You know.
So keep moving on this option.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, we, we can get you and he back here, and if you really want an official, there's still.
Yeah. And I think as we start to articulate these outdoor spaces, you'll see the potential of that big space and being able to see kids all in one location at lunch.
What is your professional opinion? You've seen many, many, many.
We spent the most time on this.
Okay.
Because we thought it addressed more things well.
But where, so I have to go.
Can we give, I was wondering if we could give direction on two story versus one story?
Two story.
Okay, I'm comfortable then.
Sorry, I have to go pick up.
Yeah, yeah.
Then, yeah, I think we're comfortable, yeah.
Okay, great.
People was moving in a two-story direction.
Right.
I mean, do we not have to focus on this two story?
I think we let them continue their work.
Yeah.
Based on what they.
Yeah.
All their specific meetings too, that they're going to have.
All right, we'll take those, this then to the steering committee and do the inside out. And now, I think, we'll also.
Now, will we continue with our meeting with the two of us?
Yeah, I mean, we're not making this.
The other thing we have was sustainability this time.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah. I have to, I have to, I have to deal with my loss, my key, so.
Of course.
Okay, here, we might go back to the previous section. What is sustainability? Good question, we, not, not significantly, we did some early, can we answer, should I answer?
Uh, I.
Oh, probably not.
Yeah.
What's that, there were the question.
Probably for your questions, I just want to make sure.
The question was whether there was a cost differential between.
Oh, I don't think we're there yet, right, on the cost estimates?
We had some early preliminary ones, and I don't think any of us would consider it significant or detailed enough to say it was worthy of a decision, yeah. Um, so just sustainability. I wanted to talk a little bit about how we look at sustainability, especially in schools. And that is that we're trying to reduce demand first, right? Reduce demand of our systems. And then how we respond are these other concepts. So we know that the greatest influence on demand is behavior, right? So how, whether you walk in a room and flip the lights on automatically, even if there's enough light, those kind of things are the big influence. And we have some influence on that as architects, like the controls that turn the lights off for occupancy sensor. But there's a piece there that the site, if they're impassioned about sustainability, would need to buy into. We respond to that with efficient building systems. It's why we keep pushing the orientation of the buildings for heat gain and daylighting. We know that lighting is one of the biggest influences on the system. So if we can get 100% natural daylighting in the classrooms, the response is even less. Systems is our all-electric HVAC system, for example, low-flow fixtures, toilet fixtures and other water-saving pieces, native plants, all the things that contribute. And then we call it transformation is kind of the renewables. How do we respond? Well, now that our code requires renewables, i.e. photovoltaic PV systems, the transformation piece is going to be some other things we'll talk about in a moment. Um, so we did receive from Sustainable Mill Valley a list of their requests. And just, we wanted to make sure to respond to that, to the steering committee. And all the things in green are the things that are just going to happen, right? They're just part of code, they're part of other things. The things in orange are really operational, that behavioral piece, how we manage those pieces. And the things in blue are the things that we, of course, will be looking at. Almost all building materials have a sustainability component to it now. This demolition piece is one we'll talk about. And then decisions on things like artificial turf. So that is the bare minimum. I don't even know if they knew how much of their list was code-driven today.
Is there any code about actually providing children recyclable, you know, recyclable bins everywhere, water, where you, you know, you teach kids not to use plastic? Is, is that part of the code?
So we, it's not part of the code, but our best practices will have water bottle fillers everywhere. And typically, we will put waste containers that Julio might slide is, the, the team might slide their bins into. That will divide by your region's recycle materials. Yeah, go ahead.
And we work with the county, and they work with our schools, like to making sure that we are within Calrecycle, recycling and composting guideline. And so that's something that it helps us out with.
Right.
Yeah.
There's like an A B something, something about composting.
Compost, yeah.
Yeah.
And so the county will generally, will do an assessment of how much recycling we have alongside waste and how much composting we generate, make sure we're reading the guidelines, and they check the practices at school, like lunchtime and things like that.
And then we want to respond architecturally to make it as easy as possible. All right, for those things to happen. So energy, water, carbon, the big three of sustainable design. We're hitting a lot of the energy pieces with our all-electric, the solar panels and battery storage analysis. On the water side, we have to control our landscape water and meet model water. The AMWELA, which is a model water analysis, domestic water. Julio tells me you have some waterless urinals in the district, which, because most schools rip, rip those things out on day one, right? But.
The middle school and the male restrooms.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
The reclaimed water, you don't have a purple pipe system here. We could certainly pipe for it, should Mill Valley put one in in the future. But no plans for that. But those are some of the big water issues that we see. And then the future of California is water and carbon. And we've talked a bit about building materials, so using the most sustainable, low-carbon building materials. But keeping our energy down, right, is also a carbon contributor. And then the building demolition that we've talked about a bit. How do we reuse as many parts of that existing building? We will have to do a carbon analysis, lifecycle analysis by code, starting July 1st on a building of this size. So we can measure sustainability in lots of different ways. And one of the things we wanted to bring forward is whether you want to measure sustainability.
This is, can I stop right here?
Of course. The whole room, right?
To discuss. Um, I, I, I'm just going to say what I think. We, the code requires us to do X. And so one question for the board is, how much better than the code do we want to achieve? Do we, what is our goal for trying to do better than code?
Code will get us probably here.
Yeah, yeah. So is there, beyond that, there's, so, you know, code minimum, when you design a building to code minimum, you are designing the worst building environmentally that the laws allow you to do. Because that is what minimum is. So if we have a goal, maybe it's 10% of 50, I don't know, on an energy use or something, or these little things. I, I wanted to kind of have that conversation, because I don't think at this day that we need to spend any administrative time getting these certifications.
Okay.
Right, that's what we were.
Good, yeah, that's a question.
Because it costs a lot of money to do all this. Um, we're already doing it, we know it. So if we can have, and maybe this goes into our mission statement, that we are, you know, trying to achieve.
X above. Or, or we could say, you know, following the LEED certification guidelines without paying to pursue the certification, right? We probably will be very close to gold, if not exceeding gold. And there are operational pieces or behavioral pieces that go into LEED certification for schools. But those we can share with you. The WELL certification is very hard, because it is so much behavioral components that are very hard to manage. And CHIPS is just a school-based, very parallel to LEED. So if we're not pursuing that, that's fine, but we always use it as a guideline, because it is best.
We still use the checklist.
Yeah.
And see where we end up in the checklist, and the checklist will tell you what you would have achieved. Have you done all the administrative paperwork, really?
And analysis, so we'll be doing daylighting analysis. We will assess our EUI or our energy use intensity. We'll start with a predictive EUI, that might be the metric Sharon that we look at, to bring you, bring you the baseline and see if you want to exceed that. So all of those are already lighting, power density, these are all things that are already measured, because we live in California, that I think it's very easy to say we want to do just a little bit more. The big things I wanted to kind of talk to you about are the building materials. Because timber, right, is the most renewable resource. A building like this, we don't often do in wood, because the movement, the inflexibility of wood when it comes to windows and openings and doors. We couldn't do it out of mass timber, right? Mass timber is the big, heavy timber that is all the rage, I will say, because it is renewable and, and a good thing. It will cost us.
It is typically about 50% more than a standard sheet.
Sounds like, sounds also like we can't afford it.
I didn't say that, but it's 50% more.
We could look at, and the, so the other thing we sometimes do at schools is demonstrative components of building systems, right? Like water cisterns, we'll never build a cistern big enough to collect all the rainwater here and put ourselves on a closed loop. But we could put a water cistern to water a student garden, for example, to show the connection between water collection and, you know, where we live and the water issues. So there are demonstrative things like that, that we often do at schools, that if we had unlimited budgets, we might do the whole thing. And maybe mass timber, we could use in the outdoor shade canopy or something to demonstrate a renewable resource like that.
I like that idea. Tara Linda has a longstanding high school diploma that leads towards an SEL, CIL. I'm going to forget what it stands for. But it's, it's a certification to be, help me out, environmental, environmental stewardship. And it's, it's very comprehensive, it's been in Tara Linda for a long time.
For high school, for.
Yes. And I'm sorry, I'm going to forget names.
Like a seal of bilingual identity, but it's a seal of environmental stewardship or something.
I will look it up, because there's, and her name is on the tip of my tongue. When I was a teacher at Mary Silvera, she was a parent there and starting this program. So Mary Silvera, I saw. So Mary Silvera, I saw it, yeah.
Our nonprofit, the Leash Student Center up there.
Yes.
For strategic energy innovations.
Strategic, strategic, SCL.
Yeah, I worked with them in my last literature.
Yeah. Strategic innovations, SCL. What's really um, exciting about it is uh, that it really took legs, can you find that maybe? It really took legs in Santa Fe High School and went on um, to break a frame. And when I was there for one year, I mean, they were a full, full-in-view uh, program, very inspiring. And, but I think it would be interesting to learn some lessons from them. Because here we live in Mill Valley, we've got this um, colleague, uh, Marit Sustainability, who at Mill Valley.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I think it would be worth, but somebody has to have the heart to move it. And also to understand how do we keep it for future generations for fifty more years? You know, but if, if we could get kids involved in this, and I don't even know if there are teachers who are really passionate about that here in our district. But um, it really ties in again to some of our mission and vision statements, terms of global stewardships.
Design feature, I mean, you know, it's about like design focus and what is our.
Other than we have a three-team, right, of students.
Yeah, yeah, we definitely.
And they are the recyclables, the, all of those.
And we had granted, what was very cool is they did like an audit, you know, kids love to have, you know, the board and. They did electric audits and I tell you, we really like to know that. And it, it helped that the kids drove it, it actually made we adults more accountable.
And there's a lot of behavioral change. I mean, we've.
That's what we.
Become accustomed to. I've never been in a district where you get to have a heater of your own and your door can be open and the heater can be on, like.
Yeah.
That's, the, and I get it's because of the way the building is right now and. But I think we will have a lot of behavioral change that we need to address. Based on the fact that we've been living in a building that really is not easy to stay in when it's winter or summer.
Well, that's what we talk about the base of that pyramid, right?
Right, right.
Is, it does us no good to save you lots of energy.
Right.
And then everyone brings a coffee pot, a microwave, a mini fridge, their own fan and heater into every single classroom.
And that, right, I, I.
A lot about commissioning early on with those steering committees. So like, one thing that is really critical is that we teach our staff how to use the building. It's its own P E D, P E D.
Very good.
Yeah. So um, but on that, you know, I wanted to talk to, I wa- I was just gonna share this here, maybe you can get back.
Now we're done on my.
Oh, was she? Okay, well, you know, um, so there was Earth Day here at the Mill Valley Community Center on Sunday. And I spoke to some people from. Um, it's, it's natural playgrounds and I know we're putting in a playground for sixth grade, I just wanted to share that with you. Can you share it with your.
Thank you.
So, so since we are across the street from Sewer Agency of Southern Marin, and we talked about the Purple Irrigation Mine.
Yeah.
Has, you know, civil landscape, like has anyone gone over there and said, hey, we're gonna rebuild this school? We are so close to you, why don't you, if you're gonna start this, like we, you know, we can bring our empty structure right up to our property line. Are you gonna connect this? Like, we are the perfect test case for reclaiming water from them. They can't get it better, frankly.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, uh, if we haven't had that conversation, can we have that conversation?
We have preliminary um, uh, city and county discussions and broad discussions on utility and infrastructure. Not um, them being the innovators.
It seems like there was something, just in a quick conversation with their, our city manager. That there may be something coming forward around how we're managing water that's gonna impact the city. Um, that's gonna require some level of infrastructure that, that will have district property. I don't know what it is or when it's coming. I don't know, potentially it's related to this, but I think that, you know.
Okay.
We probably wanna explore.
Yeah, or they're, they're just getting on board now and so they'll um, start that conversation.
So just very quickly, SCL, School of Environmental Leadership.
Oh, cool.
Uh, the mission and purpose of the school is Tara Linda High is to transform public education by building leaders for a just and sustainable world. Through an innovative model which is sustainably based, equity-forward and centered in rigorous interdisciplinary problem-solving, problem-based learning. With community collaboration at the heart. So what I wonder about them, if we wanted to jump into this.
I'm doing a project on their site right now in Tara Linda, so we can certainly ask.
Connect them, yeah.
Because it could also be, if, if we wanted to um, have that pyramid fill in, you know, and say this building is gonna launch. Um, our children leading the way for we adults and how to be sustainable in Mill Valley. Um, that these, this would be, this is a tried and true, been around for at least, I won't say ten years, not more. Um, and they have, you know, high schoolers that could come and model the way.
Well, and that's one of the changes, I mean, just programmatically, in the short term, we haven't, uh, you know. We're, have an interim administrator at the site right now, so. Running for the LCOP, you know, multiple years is. Is in transition as well, but one of the things that we want to do programmatically is say, we're redesigning a middle school. Let's redesign a middle school, let's take the opportunity to look at, you know, how does what we offer match our building? You know, do we wanna do some sustainability pathway? Do we wanna integrate some level of project-based learning, but enacted to X, Y, or Z?
If we wanna like, design and build a, a, like a, a pedestrian pier out into the marsh, for example.
Right, right, right.
Collect water, you don't go in the marsh, but a gate where you can walk out, get a water sample with some tad water, you know.
And we talked a little bit like our teleprompter, how, having a. But I do think if we're going to have that conversation, um, the steering committee might not be the place for them right now. Um, cause there's some status quo and so um, of, of course, right? I mean, I know what I know, I've been doing that. Um, and I think the PE discussion might be in that as well, and how do we want to deliver PE? Not how are we responding to our current situation?
And I think that's where I kind of to the point last night around STEM and other things. I think, I'm not quite sure when and how, because in my mind, this would all follow a portrait of a graduate. We are asking families what do they wanna see that they don't have? But again, we, we have stacked. Certain types of programs at our priority and there isn't time to do more than those unless we change the percent of time we're spending doing those. Not take them away by any stretch of the imagination, but have other equal priorities. And that's a conversation, again, I was hoping that we would be engaging our community and more around Portrait of a Graduate and what do you want it to be?
Right.
By eighth grade, twelfth grade, sixteen, oh, by the, you know, P sixteen, which, which we can do. And we really probably could still link that up next year to some of the work we, or we're overcommitted in terms of dollars. But I, you know, I, I think the STEM theme sustainability is a piece that we need to just really look at, you know, who we are. You know, as a district and community and, and, you know, articulation at least with the pathways at, at the high school district and see how those funnel back. Um.
And how we take flexible space, right?
Right.
To evolve.
Right.
And this one will be here fifty years.
Informed submission statement.
Right, right.
That's part of it.
I think flexibility probably should, because we don't, I mean, kind of to the presentation last night of, you know, educating our children to limitless futures. We don't know what the future is and it's changing so much right now, very different ways than, from an educational perspective, very different ways than a physical. Building is going to, to be, so to be, so we have human-centered design and UDL in mind when we do the work. I think we're, we're preparing our kids for.
And furniture is the future, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Infrastructure and furniture, so as long as we have the space.
And money.
Water and, um, and money for the furniture.
I have a commissioning.
Cause I don't think we wanna move everything that's here into our new flexible environment.
Yeah, percentage of that one fifteen for this building, those costs are F F and E.
It's.
Separate.
Separate.
It's totally, it's not in that, it's not in the one fifteen, F F and E, okay. So it's in the.
Sure. Do we have money for?
Fixtures.
Yeah.
Is there a budget anywhere else?
What, what is, okay, so what is the F F and E budget to know offhand? And if you don't.
Do we have enough money in our budget for what we want? A few million. Is that enough?
Yes.
Okay.
That was.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just, I got any question? Do any of your children come home talking about the climate crisis as part of their studies?
No, and it makes me, I didn't. They did an all-school read about, uh, it's like climate club, something like that at, at the middle school. Um, this last year, so I think there is awareness, I think there's discussion. My, my kid comes home and tells me that uh, the social stuff. So.
At the high school level, the conversation is completely different. They talk about it all the time.
Yeah.
It's, it's actually uh, legitimate stress in their life.
Sure.
It is an absolute downer if you really get into it with them. Uh, my own kid is like, looking at colleges, her career is focused somewhere in beating the world, fixing the world.
I know.
Fixing, yeah, I don't know.
I, I, I'm concerned about having too much of a conversation at the younger ages and starting.
It is.
Stress.
Anxiety earlier on.
Well, it is happening in the large preschool district, uh, because my nephew's come home to say he's a meat eater, that he's like really concerned about the methane from cows. But this, you know, so like they had a change. There's. But I just wanted to, I, I did send to you Sharon and you Elizabeth, just this director's message. It's Cyan, Dan, my god, she started in twenty eleven here, they have a hundred applicants for this high school program. And what's cool is that it's all about maybe a positive message about this, cause I do worry, and couldn't it be interesting again? Back to building space, pyramid, you know, tying it into messaging and in. Instead of being such a downer, that there is something our children can feel empowered to do by coming into the doors of this new building.
Well, and I, it sounds like that would also be a conversation that, like pulling in the principal or pulling in the science teachers to understand where they're going. Cause I know this year they went to evaluate some new curriculum and with an eye towards doing more online. It didn't have a textbook and like how, like how do you keep stuff like that in mind? So, um, I think pulling in educators with understanding what they're already doing and what they see the vision for the future being.
I'm gonna send this to as well, because it was a conversation that you just walked in on, but there is.
I was. She was driving, watching a board meeting. I've been waiting.
Said I'm on Z one, like.
Ah, I think that's.
Beginning direction, will you allow it to, okay, you heard, perfect. When I'm alone.
Um, the only thing we had left uh, was to just remind you the next steps. Uh, we have the steering committee meeting, the departmental meetings, May ninth, where we'll get that additional feedback that we'll bring back to you. And then we have a steering committee on June fifth, uh, community meeting on June thirteenth. And then uh, the board of trustees, um, approval in July.
July eighteenth.
In July.
Which we need to make a regular.
And then I think we were gonna talk about Elizabeth, about future uh, facilities.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's what we wanna, we, we had talked about creating that facilities committee and we sort of started it and then we sort of got involved in other things. Um, and so we probably need to revisit that and then potentially right now, I think we have trustee Nakatani on it. Uh, we may wanna add a second trustee, um, maybe with a lens. I, you know, we have the economic side covered, you know, with our C D O C and, and obviously the dashboard. Uh, but we may wanna add like an educational lens onto that committee as well. Hint, hint.
Were you pregnant, literally?
Yeah.
She, she's.
Facility.
Also be on the facility.
Facility subcommittee for the educational lens of the facilities work. We've got the architect, we may need to envision an inspiration for the program side. And we've got the budget and C D O C with uni representing, so.
Okay, we're, we're getting there. All right, that's fine. And thank you, Mr. Peters, for being here and representing our important committee.
You're, I appreciate the amount of time.
And any way it can be more helpful to you and your group, just, you know, give us some constructive feedback.
Good, I, my sense at this point is it's going well. Uh, at some point, I would suggest you have some priorities of what you might have to offload. Uh, so you don't get to the endpoint and realize that things have changed. And, oh my gosh, wait, we have to.
Well, that probably we have only three concurrent classes.
Yeah. And that prioritization session will be.
Good.
Um, are we gonna, do you have time to walk the sites still?
Sure, oh, I would love to.
I'm gonna.
You guys game? Um, I am not, because I have one kid reading a book outside.
Let me share my messages, that's why I have someone for that I could.
It's not.
Should we adjourn the meeting?
Oh, yes, adjourn the meeting, yeah, smooth out, thank you.
Thank you.